Public comment.
I have something I'd like to say.
All right, just a second. Uh, first thing I want to do is for everyone online, if you could, uh, if you want to speak tonight, if you could open up your chat and just put, just put like a number one in there. It's unsure how many people want to speak tonight. So I just kind of want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak and then we'll, we'll go over that. First thing I want to do is open up public comments to the public here. Does anyone here wish to speak?
Hi, Alfredo Chicorelli.
If you could
Just maybe come a little closer to the microphone.
So everyone can hear you and state your name for the record and
Alfredo Chicorelli. Citizen of Wells. At this time, I wish to reserve my right to make a comment until later on.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to make a comment.
Yes.
My name is Alex Vitale. I'm a citizen of Wells and also the Wells Town Hall doxxer. And I wish to make a comment until after. Because I don't have anything to say at this point.
Okay. I think
Meredith raised her hand for you, Eric.
What's that?
Meredith just raised her hand.
Yeah. Go ahead, Meredith.
Could you just make it clear what people are saying? Because online, we can't hear it that well. So you may have to repeat it, um, whatever comments they make.
Meredith, is it easier to hear what I'm talking right now than when they were talking before?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We can readjust some things. So we'll have people stand by this rank and I can move over there.
Okay, so for clarification, you want to speak later because of
Because at this point, any comment that I have is in fact so I will just hear, to hear what you are going to discuss now.
Okay.
And then add anything if I felt that purpose had anything.
Okay.
Is that feasible?
I think I wasn't expecting that, but I think we could, um, we could open up a public comment again after. I don't really see an issue with that. Uh, no other court members have an objection. Is, uh, anyone online wishing to speak?
Eric? This is Chris Sell. Eric, can you hear me, Eric?
Yes.
I, I think we, you know, we, we should set the stage. I, I know that there are a lot of people here. Um, and I think a lot of the people here in response to the letter that was sent out uh, by myself, uh, last week uh, with regards to our, my recommendation to not just Wells Springs, but to the Corey Valley as well as Rutland Town School in terms of the opening of schools and the fact that we would, my recommendation was that we would be following the, uh, Agency of Education and Department of Health recommendation regarding masking in schools, at least for the first 10 days. Uh, and then after that, we would, uh, revisit masking, uh, particularly in our pre-K through sixth grades, uh, schools, particularly Wells Village and Middletown Springs, uh, to look at what they might look like. But, uh, I, so I think there are some strong opinions or response to this. I know that the, uh, AOE sent out a memo last Friday, uh, which kind of prompted, uh, this meeting as well, that, uh, asking boards to either enact a policy, which, uh, would discuss what to do about non-compliance with masks. Uh, so if a student or a family decides not to wear a mask, uh, that the board would, under its duty of care statute provision, would, uh, then just do like they would do with a kindergartner who refused to or did not have their shots, that the student would not be, not be disciplinary what we held out of school until they could comply with a mask requirement, uh, out of the safety, you know, safety and health and wellbeing of our students and staff. Uh, and then when they were willing to wear the mask, they'd be back in school or they would just defer that authority back to the superintendent and to the, uh, local building principals. So I think that, that's, we just need to set the stage there. And then I know there's some very strong opinions, uh, with regards to this. Uh, but I think we should let the public, you know, voice their opinions on how they feel about masking. But like I said, my recommendation, I just want to state again publicly, uh, as superintendent is, you know, the duty of care statute does say that it is, you know, my job to, you know, ensure the safety and health wellbeing of students and staff. And, uh, for the past 17 months, we've been following the recommendations and the guidance of the, uh, Agency of Education and Department of Health. And my recommendation is that we continue to do that as we walk through this latest stage of COVID. I know everyone's frustrated. I'm just as frustrated as everyone else because we believe that when we ended last spring, that we, uh, that this is going to be over. Uh, that we thought that, uh, masks, we're done wearing masks, we're done with this. And then, uh, no one could have predicted what has happened over these past couple of weeks. Uh, but we're back in this. But like I said before, there is a statute. Uh, as a superintendent, it is my job to make sure that, uh, do everything I can to ensure the safety and health wellbeing of not just our students, but as well as our staff. So I just want to, I start us off with that. But, uh, so everyone's very clear what my recommendation is.
Thank you. All right, having said that, um, is there, um, Lisa, do you have a list of public comments?
Two. Libby Ramon is the first. I don't know if she can hear me.
Hello, yeah, I can hear you.
Libby Ramon, okay.
Yep. Good evening, guys. Um, in my aspect, as a parent, I believe it should be up to us. I mean, all these children are not carriers of the virus and it's harder for the children to to learn, especially with children with speech delays. And they're carriers for all these other bacterias that is out there. I don't care if any other parent wants to wear a mask. I love being the, the Middletown Springs. I moved to Vermont to have this opportunity for my daughter to have better education and I'm glad that she's here. But it's, it has been enough. This, the government is going to keep mandating all these other variants. It's all going to keep changing, whatever. If, if my daughter doesn't want to wear a mask, she shouldn't have to wear a mask. And there needs to be a way that she can virtually go home, go back to the virtual part. It needs to be an option if she doesn't need to wear a mask or she can't wear a mask. She's got so much side anxiety from wearing a mask from this past school year. It's, it's torture to her to put one on. Mommy, the vi- the virus still here. Mommy, is the virus still here? I don't want to hear that from my six-year-old anymore. It's, it, you know, she thinks it's gone now because during the summertime, we were able to leave it gone. And now she has to go back to school again thinking that the virus is back again. I, I don't get it. I mean, I, I just want her to be able to go to school. Let, I mean, if you're further apart or let her take the tablet home or the Chromebook and be virtual. And that, that's my piece.
All right, thank you.
Next is Nate Carr.
Nate Carr?
Yes, thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first, I'd just like to thank each member of the school leadership that I see here tonight, um, for all the work that you do. The school board, principal, superintendent Sell. I know you guys have a terribly hard responsibility in this past year, like you mentioned, Chris, has been really unprecedented. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do and recognize that. I know that each of you are doing this because you care about the children and you care about our school and our community. And I do want to recognize that we're all here tonight with those same basic desires. What I'd like to do is share a couple of experiences and maybe a couple of questions that I think relate to masks and our children. Um, I know I am, I'm familiar with the National CDC guidelines, the Department of Education guidelines. And again, I appreciate, appreciate the difficult position that you're in. But I wanted to make sure you're also aware, fully aware of, of a side of the issue that maybe is not as apparent. And I'm going to share that with some personal examples. One of my sons is a student at the Middletown Springs School. And in the early summer, uh, at the beginning of this past summer, when the mask mandates were over, he was at an outdoor activity. There was plenty of spacing. Nobody had to wear a mask. All the mandates were done. Nobody else was wearing a mask. And he chose to wear a mask anyway because he didn't feel safe going outside without it. And he was in no danger. And all of the experts agreed at that time anyway, that there was no danger in that environment. And his mother and I assured him that he was safe. But he had gotten to the point where it had been communicated to him that without a mask, he should be afraid. And it took him weeks into the summer before he was comfortable going outside without a mask. And I worry about what another year of that is going to do. Um, I'm worried about the lessons that we're teaching our children, not necessarily lessons of prudence, but lessons of fear. And my other son has severe learning disabilities. We recently met with a neuropsychologist and they specifically taught us that to communicate effectively with him, for him to learn, he needed three things all at the same time. He needed a firm voice, clear facial expression and clear words that all paired up. So without those three, they said, it does not get through to him. So he has significant challenges also with social interaction. And what we're being told by our medical professionals is that masks are an impediment, a severe hindrance to him in terms of learning, in terms of socialization. And that same son, as a result of some of those same challenges, he chews on his mask all day. And that compulsion that he has is now translated in all summer. We've been struggling to stop him from chewing on his shirt, from chewing on his fingers. He has to be chewing on something when the mask isn't there. So, I mean, COVID is one, one sickness that's out there, but there are some severe hygienic problems, especially he's a, he's a going into kindergarten. He was a pre-care at some of these younger ages. There's a question even in terms of germ health, if it's better or worse. And I understand, again, the national guidelines, the reasons for them. I know we all want to keep our children safe. I'm, I'm just, these examples, I'm looking for their safety on these things as well. Mental health safety, hygienic safety, communication, socialization. Those things lead to safety and just what's best for him overall. You know, we know that life is full of all kinds of different risks. And these are the risks that I weigh when I think about how to keep my sons safe holistically. And, uh, similar to what Libby said, we're very blessed to live in a place that's different than most other places. We are rural, we're a small town. We've shown that we can be very successful. Uh, we had a very well-attended summer school program that went without masks. And I thank the leaders of the Middletown Springs School and the teachers that were in that and our principal, who were able to make that work. And I think we've shown that we can make that, make that successful. So I want to thank again the principals, the teachers, the school board for helping us to navigate this. I'm sure that there will be things that we need to do this year to continue adjusting. Um, maybe there's still spacing, maybe there's still remote there. We certainly know that we still need to be flexible, that we're not totally through the woods. But there are costs that go along with the benefits of things like masks. And I think that it should be possible for a community like ours to find ways to achieve some of those benefits without some of those costs. And I guess each, each, the cost is going to be different for every child. So I would ask that you think about those costs. And my request would be that you would allow the parents to weigh those risks and benefits for their own children. You're most familiar with the needs of our school and we're most familiar with the needs of our kids. So I would hope that we would give, um, the responsibility for this decision to our local school board. And then my hope would be that our local school board would have the confidence and the faith in us as parents to make the decision for our kids. So I do want to say on the record that my children will continue to learn uh, respect for authority, including all of yours. And they're going to learn to love their neighbors. And I hope that we can each give each other the freedom to do that in the way that we balance and weigh as best for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
April is next.
April Morse.
Thank you. Uh, my name is April Morse and I am the president of the Greater Rutland County Education Association, representing Poltonie, Proctor, West Rutland, Rutland Town, and last but not least, Middletown and Wells. I would like to make a statement on behalf of this, the association. We have just completed teaching the most difficult year of our lives. Experienced teachers have called it more difficult than their first year of teaching. We were the group that stepped up during a global pandemic to bring as much normalcy as possible to the students in our area. We taught virtually and in person simultaneously, not an easy task. Our paras, bus drivers and nurses went above and beyond their job descriptions, all while wondering and worrying about whether we were going to contract this disease that has killed so many. But there was always the sentiment that we are in this together. Now, as we get ready to start another school year, the pand- the pandemic isn't behind us. In fact, it is raging again. The numbers of those contracting the disease are rising and the numbers of deaths are rising as well. Pediatricians believe that we can have a healthy, safe and productive school year as long as we recognize that schools are a place where more unvaccinated people will gather and that we will need to take extra steps to make sure schools are accessible to all. Vermont is the most vaccinated state in the country, but the Delta variant is more contagious than the strain that we were dealing with last school year. Knowing how contagious this variant is, there is more urgency now to protect our children and staff as we prepare for the upcoming school year. We are more than a year and a half into this pandemic and we've learned a lot about effective mitigation strategies. Masking is a simple and effective tool that reduces the spread of COVID-19 and respiratory viruses that can mimic the signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Students and staff wore masks throughout the school last year, school year last year. Continuing this practice makes good common sense as we start school again. The Vermont Agency of Education and the Vermont Department of Health have both recommended that school districts require masking of all students and staff regardless of vaccination status at the beginning of the school year. This recommendation is in line with national recommendations by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. Last year, we taught the most difficult year of our lives. The guidelines changed on almost a daily basis. But one thing we knew was that we wanted to be in school with our kids. That is what is best for kids. We would never want to do anything that could cause them harm. The majority of us are vaccinated. Many of our students do not have that option. Yet we are willing to wear masks to protect them. We would hope that you would see that this is just as important for students to wear masks to protect one another. Teachers, school nurses, educational support personnel and administrators have already been working hard to prepare for the school year. Respect and appreciation for the professionals who educate and care for the students of this district goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Lantman.
Sherry Lantman?
Hi, I'm Sherry Lantman. I am the kindergarten teacher at Middletown Springs Elementary. I've been teaching in Middletown since 1988. Needless to say, I'm very invested and committed to the school, my students, the school community at large. I understand your personal, uh, I, I understand personal choice. I understand personal freedom. But I feel that when it comes to public health, we need to look out for each other. I don't think it's by chance that Middletown Springs was the only school last year that did not report one case of COVID. Our school was COVID-free because we followed the recommendations of the Department of Health. We followed the guidance of our, our government system and we reaped the benefits. We were in-person four days a week. We didn't have to have any closures. And again, I, I, it wasn't by chance. It was because of the commitment of the class and that our trust in following the recommendations that were put forth to us. Hartwick District is a school in northern Vermont. They've already mandated that their staff is to be vaccinated by the middle of October. Some of the schools in that district are Waterbury, Waitsfield, Duxbury, and there's several other schools. There are private businesses within the state of Vermont that are requiring their patrons to show proof of vaccination before they even enter, walk through the door. Our government agencies are requiring their employees to be vaccinated. We cannot enforce vaccination, but I think enforcing a mask policy is a simple thing to do. And I know it's different for everybody and I respect that. But when we're looking at the safety of a whole and keeping our students in school, in person, I think it's a small thing to ask. Thank you.
Mary Yasong.
Yes, hi, I'm Mary Yasong. I am a former parent of a Middletown Springs student. Um, she's now grown, um, but I'm, I'm a longtime mem- uh, president of Middletown Springs. I also happen to be a psychologist that works in another school district. And I am, and I'm in a position where I go to probably 20 different schools. And the piece, as Sherry was talking just a little while ago, the piece for me that I think schools really play an integral role in is helping kids learn about their community and how do they be good citizens. And for me, part of that is looking at the greater good and not necessarily guess what's right for them. Um, and you know, Nate, as you were talking about, you know, looking at the kids holistically, I have to tell you, I've also been in a lot of summer programs this summer. And as the summer wore on and the, and the data was changing, more and more kids were getting frightened. And I'm hearing more and more fear. And I think it's a fear that's based in data. Um, and so again, how do we then keep our, the greater good safe? Um, because some kids might be afraid, but then if other kids aren't wearing masks or staff is not wearing masks, I think it also increases the fear. But for me, the big issue is, these are experts. You know, we listen to experts on everything. We listen to our, our, you know, physicians. We listen to our, our educators. We listen to, why would we not listen to these people that have the science behind them? Um, and this is what they're recommending. And again, I think it's a small sacrifice for the greater good um, and the safety of really all. Because I get the whole freedom piece, but none of us are free to hurt other people. Um, we don't have the right to just go through a stop sign because it might hurt somebody else. And for me, the mask thing, particularly when our kids are not even eligible for vaccines, they are their most vulnerable. And I think we need to do the most to protect their most vulnerable. Simple thing, put the masks on. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Erin Therian.
Erin Therian?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, been a long time since I've had to use this. Um, anyway, I'm Erin Therian. I'm a first grade teacher in West Rutland. And I appreciate everybody's time tonight. And one of the things I wanted to mention today is my aunt and uncle have been working with elderly people and had their shot way before we did. And they both contracted COVID and have been severely ill. So they are breakthrough cases. Myself, as an educator, I worry about myself. I worry about my own two children. I have a six and a nine-year-old, sending them back to school. And right now, here, I, I don't like wearing the mask. They don't like wearing the mask. But it's one of our ways to try to keep our family safe. I want to keep my family and my home safe and my school family safe. And that is all the schools in my district. And I really hope that we make a decision. Yes, nobody loves it. We want to make sure though, that we keep everybody as comfortable as possible. So wearing the mask for me and my kids is being comfortable and being safe. So I hope we make decisions that help keep the teachers feeling safe and comfortable and the students as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Right now, there's no one else online? I don't know if anybody else.
Uh, anyone who has called in, wish to speak? Okay.
Oh, sorry, Kayla Stevens. Kayla Stevens.
Kayla Stevens.
Hi. Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Kayla Puljazik. I teach second grade at West Rutland School. Um, I'm just here to support the teachers and to, to let the parents know that we, we don't like wearing masks anymore than the kids do. It's hot, it's uncomfortable, but if it's going to save someone's life, I feel I can put up with it. I mean, I can't imagine having one of my students come to school saying that their mom or dad has died. Um, I mean, people in their 30s and 40s, young, healthy people are dying. And maybe it's not the kids, but maybe it's the kids' parents or grandparents. And I just, I don't want to wear a mask either, but I do, I do it because I'm protecting the people that I'm with. So I hope that the other, you know, the students would have the same respect and protect their classmates and teachers and everyone at the school. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jody raised her hand.
Jody, do you have a, a, like a clarifying question or?
Well, I'm not sure, Chris, am, am I allowed to speak? I'm not sure of the exact rules since I'm a board member.
Jody, you could share your opinion anytime or thought to feedback, yes.
Okay, okay. So, so, um, I just, I just do have a, a couple of ideas about, um, the data. We keep, I keep hearing people talking about, you know, the data and following the science. And, and when I, when I looked at statistics of, of the hospital in just Rutland, I didn't do a broad swipe of all the hospitals. But if you look at the statistics of, of children admitted to the hospital in Rutland with COVID, there have been zero, zero children 18 and under have been in a hospital bed in Rutland since the beginning of COVID. So we had summer school all summer at Middletown with no masks. We were at the Rutland Fair. The entire Rutland community was at the Rutland Fair. We've had summer camps with no masks. We have, Wells Village just had a carnival. Everyone was touching everything with no masks on. I mean, the community at large, in every grocery store you go to, no one is masked. And again, no deaths from COVID in children and no children even being admitted to the hospital. And, um, I also question our children's immune systems in general being able to fight off, you know, the, the very common viruses that they get because they are not, they're masked all the time. Um, I, I definitely share the same concerns as, as Nate with my children that have, you know, special needs. Many of my children have, um, speech problems that are, are not getting any better because now, you know, they have, I have children that have hearing problems as well. And now they're hearing even more muffled sounds. Um, I, in my home, I have birth-adapted and foster children. And they, you know, have, have varying learning disabilities that are, are, it's getting increasingly more challenging for them to be able to make any ground. So I, I strongly would support parent choice. I question who exactly we are protecting at the cost of the children. Because we are putting a lot of burden on these children with high risk to protect people that can get a vaccine, you know, have the freedom to not come into the school building if they don't want to, um, if they are high-risk and are afraid of a breakthrough case. I mean, I, I just do not see the perp- I, I don't think that it is fair or humane to put that much responsibility and risk on, on our children to protect the kids. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris raised his hand.
Chris raises his hand.
Chris Sell.
Okay, uh, Chris, did you have something to say?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to be polite and not just butt in. So I do want to address, I know that J- uh, Jody and Nate have both kind of touched upon this, but students who may have a medical or behavioral or other physical challenges. Uh, over the past year or so, we have had exemptions for individuals for Over the past year or so, we have had exemptions for individuals for this. And I think moving forward into this year as well, that if a student has a known medical condition or a physical condition which prevents him from wearing a mask, that there are certain exemptions that can be made. I do believe the AOE has asked us to continue with those exemptions. So while, yes, we are, you know, I am recommending that we continue to file AOE and Department of Health masking recommendations for the, you know, the short term. If there are individuals, just as we were last year, who for medical reasons or behavioral cannot wear a mask or find it difficult to wear a mask throughout the duration of the day, that's exemptions and exceptions can be made in working with the local building principal as well as the school nurses. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, that this is not deviating from our, the process we had last year, that we would be continuing that process as well as evaluating individuals on a case-by-case basis. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wants to speak who hasn't already spoke?
Rachel Mars put a comment in the chat. I wasn't clear if she wanted to present that publicly or if she's unable to speak on the audio.
Rachel Mars?
Yeah, Rachel, did you want to add on that comment publicly or?
My mic isn't working.
Her mic isn't working. Okay. So do you want me to read her statement?
Yes, please.
Okay. So Rachel said, she asked also, "My children both go to Middletown Springs. It is difficult for one of them to wear a mask coupled with hearing aids and glasses. And the other child has sensory processing difficulties. Their father and I are all for keeping our kids and community safe. We have asked the kids' opinions and they said they were able to go to summer school without masks and nobody got sick. They vote for no masks. With that being said, if they must wear a mask at school, it should be everyone, not just the kids who can't vaccinate." Totality for comment?
Lisa, real quick, can we just respond to the last part of the statement? So everyone, the AOE and Department of Health's recommendation is that everyone for the start of school would be wearing a mask, that staff members, students, regardless of vaccination. As we look at the 80% eligible, you know, you hear that number that the Department of Health and the AOE have kind of thrown around. When vaccines are available for children 12 and younger, when 80% of that student population has received vaccines, then at that particular time, we will reevaluate and look at all vaccinated students may, you know, will really move to a mask optional policy. So I just want to kind of clarify that. That is not a situation where it's just going to be the kids who can't vaccinate. We'll know, everyone is wearing a mask to start the school year.
A couple of interactions here. I'm trying to get them all. Mary Hassan had asked if she could reply to someone else's comment. I know, I know, we don't usually do that, but I didn't know if you would allow it. And someone else raised their hand, but I couldn't. Okay, here, I can see it now. Libby Rehmel also raised her hand. She has spoken once already.
Okay, I guess.
And then Alyssa Hutchins is new, a new commenter, raised her hand.
And does she wish to speak?
I'm unsure.
Okay. I guess for since we've already heard from everyone at least once, I wanted to ask if...
Except for Alyssa, sorry.
What's that?
Except for Alyssa. Alyssa Hutchins had raised her hand.
Okay. I wanted to offer you the opportunity to speak. I know you said you wanted to speak later. I think now would be the time while we're still doing public comment.
I'm sorry, my direction were bad before. If you could stand next to that microphone, stand.
That will let, yeah.
Stand or sit.
Whatever you prefer. That'll let everybody at home hear you much better.
I certainly appreciate the issues of difficulty with complying with the use of masks for children with hearing aids, with communication issues. And I am a retired earner's physician. And so for almost 30 years, I dealt with patients like that on a daily basis. So we always used to tell people, look at the person that you're speaking with so that you can see how they're enunciating. So obviously, this has been a difficult time. But I do think that for the short term, for the start of the school year, until we see what the Delta variant is doing, until we start to see more people vaccinated under 12, I think it is safer for everyone to wear a mask in the school system. And actually, even when we go into the grocery store and when we do anything or in a public forum inside, because it is not just a protection for the person that's wearing a mask, but it is a protection for those people around. Because even if we're vaccinated, you could still be a carrier and you could be inadvertently passing the virus to someone else, whether they're elderly or young or infirm, or maybe they couldn't get the vaccine because they have medical issues. So I think globally, I think we're better off everybody doing the same thing for a short term. Reevaluate, see how things are doing. And then slowly, hopefully, as things improve, which I expect that they will, pull the masks away. But I don't think it's fair to single out... I mean, I guess there are certain circumstances where it's impossible for a person to wear a mask for one reason or another. But I think if we can support those families in some way, support the kids in some way so that they can wear that mask, maybe a different kind of mask or a different situation, maybe not a mask, maybe a shield instead. If there's something, so that everybody's doing the same thing, I think everybody will feel more comfortable and less anxious. And even now, when you go into a store, some people are wearing masks, some people aren't. You wonder, oh, is that person vaccinated? Do I need to keep away from them? Or do they think I'm not vaccinated because I have a mask on? There's too much second guessing. So I think if you make everybody the same, then we respect everyone. And perhaps in the long run, that will be better. Because in the future, we're probably going to have other situations like this, public health situations. So I think the better we handle this, maybe the easier it will be to handle 10 years from now, five years from now in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jackie Becker. I'm the school nurse for Wells and Middletown. And first, thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion. And my heart is going out to all the parents. I know this is such a tough year. And I'm sure at both of these schools, we're going to do the best we can to stay outside as much as we can, which is, it worked out really well last year and was, enabled the kids to see our faces. So, but I would like to express my support for starting the school year, again, starting the school year with the staff and students masked while inside the building. My support is based on the recommendations of the AOE, the NEA, the CDC, the AAP, as well as the National School Nurse Association, the Vermont State Nurse Association, and all of the nursing and medical personnel in the GRCSU. I have done some reading, trying to understand the point of view of folks who do not feel like we need to mask in schools. And I couldn't find anything that was really evidence-based or very robust.
Can you speak up, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can't hear you right now.
So as you know, in the midst of the pandemic, those over 12 being vaccinated and masking of groups when inside are currently really what we have, our tool for protecting our younger children. The Vermont Department of Health data just released shows a dramatic rise in coronavirus infections among children. I did speak with Dr. Dave Schneider this morning. He said they're seeing an uptick locally in their office as well. While the safety of the children is the main concern, I'm also concerned about the situation with positive kids in school and contact tracing and kids needing to be out of the building for quarantining or for testing results and losing more school time. Our goal is to keep the kids in school. Sending the close contacts home to await test results or the quarantine is really difficult for the family. I think a lot of the other schools in the GRCSU really struggled with that this year. We were fortunate in our two schools, but that was a real stress on parents and on families. So I don't think mask wearing is perfect. We all, we all know that. But what research we have to date primarily supports the view that masks are one layer of a tiered approach to reduce the spread of coronavirus. Reducing positive COVID cases in our school community is what will protect our children and keep us all in school. And just listening with everybody, I would like to say, please reach out. You know, if your kids are struggling with masks, again, we can, we'll do the best we can to accommodate in whatever way, whether it's more outside time, a different mask, or just supporting them emotionally. That's very important to all of us at both the schools. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, someone asked a question for Jackie. I don't know if we should address that before we move on or not.
Yeah, I see that, Amanda. I was, I was going to tell Eric there were some questions in the chat after we finish this. How people come back if we need them to, I think.
Sorry.
Okay. Thanks for making sure I saw it. No problem.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Again, my name's Avlato Chikareli. I live in Wells. I'm an employee of the GRCU. I staff the health room at Polton High School. Last year, I was the COVID coordinator for the district, assisting superintendent cell, principals, and school nurses in developing appropriate local responses within the guidelines that were handed to us by the Department of Education, Department of Health, incorporating CDC guidelines, and best practices nationwide. This, last year was a difficult year, but for the most part, schools were safe. If we look at our own GRCU data, we had some difficulties, but the vast majority of that was due to occurrences that occurred when people behaved noncompliant fascist outside of schools. We kept your students safe with opening the windows, box fans, more ventilations. We did things such as distancing, which we are not, no longer recommending. We have a public health tool that is inexpensive. And in medicine, we say, first, do no harm. Now, that is not perfect with a mask. There will be some challenges. But as superintendent cell stated, there is a very generous medical exemption policy with the healthcare provider states in writing through a form that was presented by the GRCU last year. So people could be excused. Indeed, at Polton High School, out of 237 students, we had one. Most people can handle it. There will be exceptions to every rule. And that's why there can be, and there will be exceptions made for those people who have difficulty hearing, speech developmental delays, people can't tolerate masks due to sensory abnormalities. Masking is an inexpensive tool that can preserve public health. Do not tie the hands of the healthcare provider you depend on to keep you and your children safe. I believe that masks should be required. Polton High School is going to be doing that until this current surge, you know, becomes a little clearer and we have the opportunity to vaccinate some of our most vulnerable. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I want to take, some, most of, many of the questions in the chat are informational or for clarity, which might be better directed to, I think, most of them are for Chris at this time. I don't know if you want to just keep doing public comment. Do that after or?
Yeah, I don't really want to keep doing public comment, either that ends up being a discussion or conversation. So if there's no one else who wishes to speak here or online.
I have a question. Can I walk up to my microphone? Ask this question?
I, yes.
Is there confusion?
What's that?
Is there confusion?
On.
I have a question about a comment, if there's any other issue, clarification.
Okay, by all means, ask your question.
Thanks. We can't hear back there, but earlier somebody, we keep hearing about exemptions.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
John Dickerson.
Thank you, John.
It's J O N. Just some clarifications on these exemptions for students that have special needs and whatnot. I just keep hearing, how do we go about finding out more information about these exemptions?
So John, I would encourage you to reach out to your building principal and/or school nurse for copying the form for information. Okay?
So is it a form that we have to fill out? Is there something that we have to?
Yeah, yes. Last year, there was a form that needed to be filled out that began the process. Then there was a discussion with the principal, the school nurse, as well as Avlato Chikareli as the COVID coordinator last year. Kind of oversaw that. This year, shifting away from the COVID coordinator, it will be building base. So that discussion will be had with Jackie Becker as well as Rick or Liz.
You describe it as a process? So we've been through this before? Or do we know how long this process takes?
Like I said, it depends on the individual, case-by-case situation. So I'm not, I'm not quite, like I said, there are many different hypotheticals to that. In some cases last year, it was pretty, pretty quick. Some were a little more drawn out. So I think if you have any questions concerning, I would just suggest reaching out to Rick or Liz or Jackie as soon as possible, just to begin that process. And the process, like I said, is you fill out a form, you then, and then they will ask some follow-up questions and look to see. So there were certain cases last year that were not deemed as, as qualify for an exemption. So like I said, you know, Chick and the building professionals, like Jackie Becker, would work with the, the local professionals and determine whether or not it met the criteria for a medical exemption or a behavioral or physical exemption.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
There's another one, too, that has no microphone. It's down at the bottom. I didn't see it.
Another public comment.
Yeah. Do you want to go back to Alyssa?
Yes.
Alyssa Hutchins, are you still there? Did you raise your hand to make a comment?
Uh, no, thank you. Sorry.
And then James Reed made a comment online. He said he has no microphone. He said, "I have two children that go to Middletown Springs and they both went to summer school without masks. They did much better learning than they did in school with the masks. They also both play football and so far, there has been no issues. They both have learning disabilities and it has made them go backwards in learning as well as having to alternate in-person and remote. I think that masks should be parent choice." I, there, again, there are a couple of questions, but I don't see any other public comments in the chat.
Couple of questions regarding...
Over. Chris responded to one. There was one question about what, what will happen once the 12 and under vaccine is available in terms of how this might change. And Chris had responded to that in the chat, that the current guidance and recommendation from the AOE and Department of Health states that masks will no longer be required for those eligible for vaccination when the vaccination rate, two doses of a two-dose vaccine among students is equal or greater to than 80% of the school's currently eligible population. But that in quotes, taken from the guidance itself. If this recommendation changes, we would adjust, but that's what it is at this time.
Can I make a public comment? Can I?
Yeah.
Can I go?
Yes.
Okay. This is Ryan DeSalle. This is a public comment. I am a board member, but speaking on behalf of myself and my family. Again, I have nothing but respect for all of our faculty and our staff at Middletown. We, we love the school and we, it's been a challenging year for all of us. The summer program was wonderful. My kids felt like they were back to normal. They were both inside and outside, very much hands-on. A lot hands-on, probably because they had been missing out on it for so long. And it was really great and refreshing to see my daughter not continue to regress in her speech like she had with her mask on. She was not saying things because people couldn't understand her, so she did regress. But over the summer, I've noticed she's gotten back on track and we're really happy to see that. The other day, she had to wear a mask in the office and somebody asked her something and she didn't want to talk to them because she knew they weren't going to be able to understand her with her mask on. So it's hard to go into the year thinking that that might happen with her again. We've seen such great progress. And, you know, not only was her speech an issue, but her seasonal asthma became asthma that was all year round. Her face was flushed red, sweaty every day. It's very warm in the school building. I don't need to tell teachers that, you know, too. I just think that at this point, this is a well- is a Wells Spring Board meeting. This is to deal with the Wells and the Middletown schools, and that's what we need to be focused on. And I think that we've done an amazing job. I think we have small schools. I think we have the ability to space out as needed, and to accommodate parents as needed while keeping it a choice for us to make as parents, because it is a healthcare choice at the end of the day. When I send my kid up to school, I understand I am taking a risk. Whenever I walk out of house, we're taking a risk. People text and drive. My son wants to ride his bike to school. I'm taking a risk letting him do that. It, it, it's the nature of life. We can't live in fear when our numbers in Wells and Middletown aren't there. We don't have a COVID problem here. We need to deal with Wells and Middletown. That's what this is for, and that's how I think we should approach the start of the school year. The teachers at this point that want to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. They can wear their masks. If parents feel safe sending their kids to school with, if they feel better sending their kids to school with a mask on, send them. Somebody mentioned that it's not fair that some kids will have them and some won't. Well, Kristoff mentioned that when kids 12 and under are able to get them, they won't have to wear a mask, but the other kids were. So, there's still gonna be kids with them, and some with not. You see that every day. I go into a grocery store. Yeah, there's a few people that have them on. I don't care. That is their personal choice, and I'm fine with that. But it should be a choice that we make as parents and work with the school. I'm okay with the screening. If you want to take their temperature before they come in, that's fine. I don't have any issues with that. We have small classrooms. We have outside areas. We can space out. That's okay. But to have a huge community breakfast first school day with everybody in town, but then as soon as they walk in the building, they have to put a mask on their face, I just, the common sense factor that's what I mentioned, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Common sense is thinking, okay, if you're sick, yes, we'll keep you home. It might be hard. I'm gonna miss a day of work, but we'll figure it out. Common sense is not instilling fear on your kids to walk out of the building without a mask on their face, and thinking they're gonna be dying of COVID, because the numbers just aren't there. We don't live in New York City. Middletown had no cases. The summer was wonderful. I'm not aware, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not aware of any cases right now in Middletown or Wells, or with the faculty or the students. Maybe I'm wrong, but for reopening, I think our plan should be, yes, go back as safe as possible. People that feel more comfortable with masks, absolutely wear them. But again, parent choice, parent involvement. I wish we could have had this meeting two weeks ago. Unfortunately, it wasn't an option, but we're having it now, and I really hope that we can find some, even some middle ground, you know? If masks have to be worn, take them off when they're at their desks. They, they don't, they don't need to have them on their desk. And I'm sitting in a room with people right now who are not masked. I feel completely safe. I've been shook in hands with people in this room. So, I think that we really need to think about what common sense means when we took these policies in place. I'm done.
Thank you.
Sherry Lantman had a question, actually for Nurse Jackie. Sherry asked, is my understanding that absenteeism due to illness was down considerably last winter? Can Nurse Jackie address that in our school buildings in particular?
Last year was her first year, so I think it's supposed to address that.
Jackie, if you couldn't hear her, Jackie said, last year was her first year, so perhaps the principals could address that, or we could bring data, like actual numbers at some future meeting, if that's helpful. Okay. And Libby asked about, what about more air conditioning in schools? And Chris, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the grants that are available right now.
Oh, it's something we worked on last year, would make sure we have proper ventilation. Proper ventilation, air conditioner are two different things. I think with, as Avletto discussed, with the opening of windows, with the air ventilation system, we have air purifiers for every classroom that are put in place. I think, you know, as we look at air conditioners, just an air conditioner alone would not take care of it. That would be more of a comfort level, as we have like some, particularly rather warm days, and students wearing masks. But we, we, we've worked on that a lot last year, make sure that all of our schools have the, the air quality standards. I know that Avletto and I did walk through each building. Rick and Liz worked with their, their custodians and facilities directors on that as well. So, but looking at future air conditioning, that's something which we can discuss as a board.
One new one?
One new.
Raised, raised hand. Yep. Beth Carmody.
Hi. I'm a pre-K mom in Middletown Springs. Um, sorry, just, yeah, okay. So, I have a couple of thoughts. So, I mean, yeah, cases, you know, went down over the summer, like the state reaches great vaccination rate, but like it's ticking back up, right? Like a couple of months ago, there were no more deaths in Vermont, like holding steady. And then, look, every day, or a couple, like there's been 10 in August, people are still dying. So, you know, maybe not right now in Middletown or Wells, maybe not so much in Rutland, but like, it, it's, I feel like it's coming back. It, it's not just, that's just not my, that's not just my personal feelings. I believe that's what the data is showing. So, I think while it was a huge relief to go mask-free, have a little more freedom this summer, to move around, socialize with people, you know, it, it sucks that we have to go back to restrictions, but I just, I just think that's gonna be the safest thing to prevent more deaths and sickness in our community. So, like, you know, I'm not, like many people have said, not crazy about the idea of wearing a mask, but I think it's, it's just absolutely important. One thing, so I'm a little alarmed to hear about so many people expressing interest in mask exceptions, because from my understanding of how it works, is that I wear a mask not to protect myself, but protect you. If I'm infected and I'm wearing a mask, I'm not gonna infect you. So, your choice to not have your child wear a mask, it's not just your choice, it's, it's affecting me, it's affecting my child, and, and our health, and, you know, chance of, of illness and worse. Also, you know, we don't know what the long-term effects are. You know, some people are suffering pretty bad pretty long. So, I don't want my four-year-old or my newborn to have, you know, COVID long-term effects. So, I feel like I'm, I'm a pretty new resident to Middletown Springs, and I'm, you know, very happy to be here. And I'm, I'm really proud of, of the community and, you know, of my new adoptive state, of how well we've handled COVID. But this is, I think, not the time to get lax. And as, as hard as it is, you know, I'm willing to, my family is very strongly willing to, you know, take whatever precautions we need to. Just one other thing that might ease some people's concerns, or, or help with some of the problems with masks, are, you know, those masks with the clear panels to help with facial expressions and lip reading. I know that doesn't solve all the, the problems of, of volume and muffling, but that's something that I would be willing to purchase, you know, for my family, you know, try to make available, if that's something that could, you know, address that concern. I think so.
Thank you. Sarah Haley.
Hi. I have a, a daughter in Middletown Springs, and first off, I completely agree with what Ryan DeSalle said. I do think it should be a choice. There's not a state of emergency in Vermont right now. There is no mask mandate. So, I'm wondering if the school does decide to make it a rule that everyone has to wear masks, how is this going to be enforced, and what ramifications are there going to be if I tell my child, no, you don't need to wear a mask, which, you know, quite honestly, I would hate to have to do that, because I don't want my daughter to feel like she's breaking a rule. But if this is not mandated, mandated by the state, and I'm sure everyone in this meeting goes into stores and are not screened before they walk into those stores, you have a choice. Wear your mask or don't wear your mask. Middletown Springs is a much more controlled environment than that. You can still screen those kids. You can, you know, communicate to parents as much as possible that they keep their kids home if they're ill. You can have a room that's designated for them, that if they show any symptoms, they're isolated right away. There's no reason that we need to be masking every child. My daughter, who has never loved school, is already like, I can't believe we're gonna have to wear masks again. You know, this is her last year at Middletown Springs. It's just ridiculous when there is no data in this area showing that there's a problem. And if we can't enforce it, which, if it's not a state mandate, I don't understand why we're even having this discussion. Like, who's, who's gonna be monitoring this at school? Is, is Rick gonna have to move out of classes because they take their mask off, or they walk into a building without their mask on? That's not his job. His job is to make sure the teachers are, you know, instructing the kids with the, the curriculum they're supposed to be getting. I mean, we are, every school is so far behind. I'm a teacher myself. We need to get the education back out to our kids. We've lost a lot of ground because of this, and I don't think this is what we need to be discussing right now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right now, there's no one else online.
Okay. So, nobody else wishes to speak, I guess, who already hasn't already spoken? This would be the opportunity to do so. Ben? Would you like to speak? Yes.
Do you want me to shove this off, so people can hear better?
Not really. It's kind of odd.
It's kind of warm. The air feels good. Okay. Good evening. This is Susan Ciccarelli. I'm a citizen here of Wells, and I'm also a healthcare professional of 35 years. And I'm also a parent of four children. This is very unprecedented times. The last time we've had something of this scale was in 1918 of a pandemic. The next thing that, when I started my nursing career, was in the 1980s with HIV and AIDS. And we asked for everybody's patience and understanding to work through that as people, as healthcare, the science studied this virus. How is this affecting people? How we can protect everyone in society within the community? And I am sitting here as a parent, and I fully understand, and as a healthcare professional, and I echo sentiments here, that we have patience, and we cooperate and work well with each other, so that we can protect the most vulnerable. We had, we did that when we had the, our elderly parents in nursing homes. I couldn't see my aunt for months until I was vaccinated, until this was a bit under control. You know, so we, there was visiting restrictions. You could only see, my brother-in-law passed away just over the summer, one year ago. We couldn't see him, you know, in his last days in hospice. We had to wave, because we had to protect other people in the hospital. We had to protect. So, we respected that. And sitting here, I'm just asking for the community whether, you know, this is, I realize, Ryan, this is Middletown Springs, sorry, Ryan, I really, you know, or Wells, but we, we're all in this. It affects everybody. We may not have cases here now, but it's here. And I don't think we should wait for something to be on our doorstep when we have the means to protect the most vulnerable. And at this time, those are our children, and they are extremely precious to all of us. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Else? Then I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on to.
Can I, can I make a couple of remarks?
Ed, as far as, just.
As far as this section.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm George Gonda, I'm a school board member, and I've listened to everything tonight. This is, this is talking about urine our kids. And it's very emotional. We want the best for our kids. But let's do a reality check and, and know that kids under 12 can't even get the vaccine at this point in time. Everybody else that has it, it's under an emergency approval. It's not finally approved. Once we get that approval, once it's available to everyone that can get it, I think we'd all be much more reassured. It's good that we haven't had any kids in Rutland Hospital this summer. That's a wonderful thing. And it's probably because we have been following the guidance from above, from the healthcare specialists in this country. And maybe it's because of a little luck. But we had good success in our schools last year because we followed the guidance. Why do we want to change that now and take a risk? Vermont is a little bit of a, a good place for, in our response to COVID. We've pulled together on this. We've had very good success, leading the nation in a lot of things. But we're not an island. We've got visitors coming in from all over. I've been up in Burlington the last few days. We, you don't see too many Vermont plates, okay? We're not an island. And as someone just stated, we need to perfect, protect the most vulnerable. That's our kids. So, I, I just think to start off the year, this is the right thing to do. And as been stated in the letter, it's to collect data to see where we actually stand for the first two weeks, first 10 instructional days. Just one other note here. Variants come from transmission. Whether the people transmitting gets sick or not, why do we want to keep transmission going at a high rate? We need to cut that off so the next variant isn't worse. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Okay. With that, we will move on to the actual fall reopening plan. So, all the board members should have received this. And I guess the next thing would be, are there any questions? Do any of the board members want to have any questions as far as the reopening plan goes, or any questions for the superintendent?
I do have a question, and I think it's been answered already on the one section where it says masks when required may be removed when needed for instructional or operational purposes? And that is for the exceptions? Is that correct?
George. Yeah, George, those are things which will provide more clarification. I don't know, but that's if students like say in speech therapy, or working one-on-one somewhere, that's where it's at. It won't just be a classroom teacher just says, hey, let's take our masks off for right now. It's more in special situations where they're working one-on-one, where an individual has to, you know, see a student's mouth, but, you know, that'll be done with other mitigation measures in place, well, like distancing and ventilation.
Okay, thank you.
So, that doesn't, that doesn't have to do with, in the classroom setting, if their desks are far apart, that doesn't mean they can take them off while they're participating in a group discussion, or reading out loud, or?
That's correct. Students will be masked at that time still, yes.
Even when spaced apart, they still will have to keep them on at all times at their desk in the classroom?
Correct. Correct. Physical spacing is not a recommendation of the Department of Health. Mask is the, the mitigation measure that they feel is most important. So.
Chris, the letter said, as far as like the kids over 12, there was something that I had read about them possibly not needing to wear masks if they are vaccinated after those 10 days, but then vaccinated, unvaccinated would. Are we still doing that? I wasn't clear, and I'm sorry, my link is not opening at the moment.
So, the guidance right now discusses the 80% of eligible students. So, if you were looking at a, let's say, a seven through 12 school that has, say, 200 students, if you have 160 of those students who are, have been vaccinated, then at that time, they would have met that 80% threshold after 10 days, and then therefore, all vaccinated individuals within that building would be allowed to remove masks. I mean, it would be mask optional. It would be very similar to what they were proposing for last spring, that once the community had 80% threshold, that masks would not necessarily need to be worn. So, they look at the same sort of thing. We're waiting on further clarity. We're waiting on further clarity around the 80% as well, but...
And that would be masks don't need to be worn by everybody or just those vaccinated?
According to initial guidance, within that school setting, if 80% of the students eligible have been fully vaccinated, then no one would need to wear a mask. Masks would be optional.
Okay.
But like I said, you know, as we found out last year, that could change. We could find that mid-September, the Delta variant has kind of warts course and things, you know, conditions start to improve, and the AOE and Department of Health may consider other options at that particular time. It really is, as it's always has been, a day-to-day situation. And I know that they shifted from the strong and healthy start guidance that basically got us from semester to semester to a series of memos, because they understand the fluidity of the situation, particularly with Delta variants. And they do believe that masking is the most important, you know, measure for students right now. It is a proactive strategy, not a reactive strategy.
And how is it gonna work when they go outside? They can take them off outside, and since there's no distance requirement, they can be with their friends outside with no distance between them, hugging, whatnot, with no mask on?
So, Ryan, if you, the letter did state that, that we're looking at when they're outside, they will not need to wear a mask, but we still want to use common sense with regard to spacing, you know, in certain situations, so yes.
So, spacing for outside but not inside?
That's correct. It's what the guidance states.
It seems like we have small enough schools where we could work on some spacing inside, but that's just my opinion.
Well, we, you know, if teachers have the space, obviously, they can go with, you know, three feet if they wish to do so, follow CDC, but that was not in the AOE or Department of Health's recommendation.
So, this isn't really up for any type of discussion, then, from what I'm gathering? It's just already in place? Are we able at this point as a board to make any other, make our own policy at this point? Or, I mean, is that just totally off the table?
The board could make a policy, but what would that policy say? And I think we have, if we, I mean, if you think about creating a policy, board could come up with a draft policy, but it would still take time to implement that policy. Even if we draft one tonight, it potentially can be implemented until October or November. So, as far as a policy goes, and that's, I think that's just kind of the short of it, but the board could also, you know, follow the superintendent's recommendation. I don't know, and that was one of the questions that I was wondering about, you know, we've heard about modified, like a modified version of the guidance. I don't know if that's something that could be done, but I think, you know, looking at the memorandum and the reopening plan, there's the duty of ordinary care that I think we need to discuss as well, and what that means for the district. And I don't know if, Chris, maybe you wanted to go over exactly what that would entail?
Well, I mean, we've all should have read the statute, too, as in the letter. I put it in there specifically to, for everyone to see and for the board to reference. As superintendent, as a local school board, we are operating under a duty of care provision, which we are supposed to eliminate or mitigate risk in our building. And so therefore, as we're looking at setting policy or procedures, putting in place that's meant to not put our students in harm's way or in a health situation. I know that this is a contentious issue, you know, regarding the use of wearing a mask. I do know that if we, you know, if the board would choose to deviate from the AOE or Department of Health recommendation, or CDC, or the American Association of Pediatrics, or particularly Vermont Association of Pediatrics, that they, there is an issue around liability and around duty of care. So, like I said, as a superintendent, I'm not acting as a person, I'm acting as superintendent. And like I said, that's why my recommendation would be to continue to follow the AOE Department of Health recommendations, as we've done for the past 17 months, to get us through this, through this fall opening. And then, as we get through these first couple of weeks, we'll then reassess based on what's happening in our schools, but...
Meredith?
I'd like to make a motion to delegate planning for COVID-19 mitigation measures, including masking, to our superintendent, Christopher Sells.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Amanda, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was going to actually ask if we could make a motion to move into executive session to discuss it a little further before...
Amanda, you cut out a little bit there.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was going to ask if we could make a motion to move into executive session to, as a board, just have a little more communication before we make our discussion.
This wouldn't be the criteria of executive session. So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Questions, comments?
I would say that I would be okay with taking the time to work with the board to do our own policy for this, because I think that it's important that we have, I think it's great so many parents were able to give their input tonight. And perhaps we do, because of the timeframe, I, again, I had asked for a meeting a couple weeks ago about this. But I think for us to meet and establish our own policy would be what I would like to see happen. There's other school districts that are doing this. It's been uncommon to be away from the whole supervisory union and just focus on our own schools. I understand time is a problem, so perhaps we do have to strike the year off based on the guideline. But I think that as a board, we should move to do our own policy on this.
Well, the motion that's on the table right now is to, and Meredith, I don't remember it word for word, but is to basically give the authority to the superintendent to make the decisions.
Yeah, it's to delegate planning for COVID-19 mitigation measures, including masking, to the superintendent. And for what it's worth, I am assuming that is for our Wells Springs district, not for the Crixus supervisory union.
Yes.
I know I have not been called on, this is Sarah Haley again, but I feel like, what is the purpose of having a school board if the school board's not going to be able to create this policy and is just having the superintendent do it? We elect school board members so that they can represent us, and by just having a single person make a policy doesn't allow for that representation.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Also, as I said earlier, you know, a policy is something that would have to be worked on. It's nothing that's going to take place quickly. So, you know, regardless, I think that there's still, depending on how the board votes tonight, some people are going to be happy, some people are not, I don't know. But I still think there's, there's still time, and we still need to see how things go and just continue to move forward. Amanda?
If we delegate to Chris tonight, then we can still make a policy because it's already delegated to Chris, correct? So, if we were to take time to have a discussion, to discuss a policy, our policy could technically say we're leaving Chris in charge for the first 30 days to give us time to write our policy. Could we do that, something like that?
I think if we created a policy, and that policy, depending on how it was framed, it would probably take place over any motion we put in tonight, would be my thought. Meredith?
So, for what it's worth, our one employee is Christopher Sells, and I feel he is in a unique position to be making these decisions that take into account all the different sides and not just the staff, not just specific parents' concerns, not just the board's specific issues. I think it is much more aligned with the overall perspective instead of looking at it through everyone's individual lenses.
Jody?
I would argue respectfully, Meredith, that that is a lot of decision-making for one person and then a lot of burden for Chris Sells to carry, you know, when half of the community or more than half of the community is upset about that decision. I would be much more comfortable with the school board having a discussion about it. And I'm a little, I'm just a little unclear because I'm new to the school board. I don't really know how everything works like y'all do, but I'm a little confused about why, I understand that you're working under, you know, the Safety Act, that's your, the safety policy, but it seems that, you know, that the superintendent could make a choice to mask or to shut down a school or to do anything that they deem, you know, worthy of keeping the community at, less at risk for the kids. And that doesn't require red tape or, you know, a month of planning. What is the difference? It seems like there was no policy, and we masked our kids, and now to unmask them, there seems to be a lot of red tape to create the policy. I'm just, I guess I'm just confused about that process.
For one thing, there was a state of emergency in place, so that is the biggest difference. There is no longer a state of emergency in the state of Vermont, so now we shift to a different relatively set of rules, the rules that we generally operate by. And until that changes again, this would be the normal mode of operation.
Well, wouldn't the normal mode of operation, if we're going back to a non-state of emergency, be that kids go to school without a mask on?
Then I guess you could bring up the fact that the Board of, the Agency of Education has made recommendations with regards to our students' safety in school.
Right, but they haven't made mandates, nor have the governor.
Correct. They cannot make a mandate outside of a state of emergency that they could strongly recommend.
It's a recommendation.
They recommend that we, they recommend that we require, and that's the language that they're using, they strongly recommend that we require this, so...
So, I guess my question is, what is the strong policy that allows schools to turn away kids for not wearing masks or, you know, discipline them or whatever it is that intends to happen if a bunch of kids come to school without masks on? When there's no policy, it's just a recommendation, there's no state of emergency...
So, Jody, in that memo that went out that I'm sure you read, what the AOE is asking is that either the board adopt a policy around masking that would, you know, discuss what to do about non-compliance, about parents say, my kid's not wearing a mask and nothing you can do about it. Well, the board would have a policy in place that would have a plan, or they would delegate the authority to the superintendent. As I said at the start of the meeting, what, you know, what other school districts or SCUs are looking to do is following the same sort of guidance or procedure that they use for kids who show up at school who don't have the required shots. And so therefore, that they cannot be in school until they have those shots in place. So therefore, if a student would show up, say, without a mask, they would be, you know, they would not be allowed to enter the building until they complied. They would not be denied access to, you know, they'd still have access to materials. It would not be a disciplinary issue, but they would just, until they complied, that's what would look to be happening. So, and we anticipate that this would happen for some, some families would, you know, test the system, but I think most families would understand the, you know, the situation and the greater good. So, as a parent myself, I get it. I understand exactly where everyone's coming from. My daughter, you know, she'll be masked up, she starts tomorrow. Because why? Because that's what she needs to do. So, and there's no, there's no discussion about it, she's, you know, doing it fine. And as a parent, I'm not worried about the mental or psychological effects. I think my daughter will be just fine. And that's as a parent I'm speaking, so...
Well, and I think... I think it's really important to remember that for those who do have significant issues with masking and need to not be masked, that there are other avenues, that they are not like being penalized because if they have whatever learning disorder, challenge, whatever it is, hearing, speech, there are other paths to like going to school. They are not going to be, there will, there may be people at the school, I would imagine, who don't have any masks on, but they will for a specific reason that's reasonable.
So, when you say, Chris, that the board is to adopt a policy for these things, has that, has that happened or is that something that is going to happen?
So, Jody, as you read the memo that was distributed last week, where they suggested that the board, and it's kind of what you said, I think a lot of superintendents are kind of hoping that the boards take the hits for this, that take the onus off the superintendent that should be a discussion. So, the board supports the superintendent's recommendation, the board adopts a policy. The concern that I have is the fluidity of the information and the, if a memo comes out on Wednesday, if the board has made a policy that's, they'll be responsible for all COVID-19 mitigation measures, then the board will have to meet and discuss, be aware, it slows the process. I think last year, as we went through, even under state of emergency, there were a lot of, there's a lot of fluidity to this, that we had to make adjustments on a regular basis. So, you know, I mean, whatever the board's decision is fine with me, but like I said, I go back to saying, as the memo says, either the board has to take a stance on masking or they have to sit there and give me the authority to do that. So, and James, a child's mental health, that's, please do not parse my words. I'm strongly concerned about all child's mental health. That's part of our recovery plan, the social emotional, so that's not a concern at all, please. The safety and health and well-being of all our kids are there, so it's a fair, unfair statement being made. Thank you.
I certainly believe, I certainly believe that to be true. I certainly believe, I certainly believe that to be true, Chris, that you, you know, do have, I mean, you have a, that's, this is a really big decision for you to, to have to weigh and come to. I, I, oh, I've lost my train of thought now. I think that most, many parents would be much more comfortable with, you know, we need to mask our kids for the first two weeks of school and then assess the situation, just like, you know, a year and a half ago, when it was, you know, we need to mask for a while, but, but if we, I mean, this, this could go on for the next two years, and that, that will strongly affect all of the children in my house who are already deeply affected. So that's, it's not, it's not, you know, masking for a couple of weeks to assess it, or even masking for, but it, it feels like this will never stop until COVID is eradicated off the planet, and that's not going to happen. That's what it feels like to, to me, and I think to a lot of parents who are hesitant to put a mask on their children again for another year, is what it feels like is might happen. That's, that's all I have.
Questions, comments? All hearing done, I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Say aye or raise your hand.
Raise our hand or state nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
So we have three yays, three nays. So that, so I will say, before, I, I just want to say that I, I understand both sides of wearing masks, not wearing masks. My, my personal beliefs, I'm done with masks. However, having said that, I, I'm not a physician, I, I don't, I, I'm content with sending my daughter to school, or not, with a mask or without, but I think that making a, when we're talking about the safety of staff and the children, that's not something that can be done lightly, and I think that the recommendations by the AOE and the Secretary of Education are important and shouldn't be ignored. So having said that, you know, my vote would be in favor of the motion. The motion would pass. And I guess a motion would be in order to adjourn if the board has no other questions or comments.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I believe Jody has her hand up.
I think, I'm not quite sure, Jody's had her hand up for almost the entire meeting, I'm not sure if that confidentiality is working or not.
Yeah, I thought that was from...
Jody, did you have something to say?
No, no, I'm sorry. I don't know why my hand is up the whole meeting.
You, you have to click it on and off. There you go.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, Meredith.
Motion by Courtney, second by Meredith. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned at 7:38. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for all the comments.